Thank you ladies and gentlemen for being here tonight. I'd like to call this March 5th City Council Meeting to order. And I'd like to call on Ward A, Councilman Terry Meeks to give us an indication.
Okay, so we're going to look at Proverbs 9:10 tonight. And it says, "The fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom, and the knowledge of the holy is understanding." So just, just, just for a brief moment, that word "fear" doesn't mean that we are supposed to cower or be afraid of God, but rather it means that we are to be in awe and majesty of everything that he's created, given to us, and done for us, both since the beginning of time, what he continues to do now, and what he's going to do for us in the future. So let us pray. Lord God, give us the grace to seek to know you and your majesty, your splendor, and in your authority and power over all things. For in knowing you, the soul is filled with awe and wonder for all you have done for us. You lay before us the path of wisdom, understanding, and the knowledge of our position before you, and how to model ourselves before our neighbors and how to treat one another. So as we conduct the city's business this evening, may we use this wisdom in our deliberations and decisions to honor both you and the community. And all of God's children said, amen.
Thank you, Terry. Will you all please stand for a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will call on the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Francis.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley. Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Here.
Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Here.
Councilmember Meek.
Here.
Councilmember Lumberger.
Here.
Councilmember Keel.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Handy. And we have a quorum.
All righty, thank you very much. Under awards and recognition, I would like to call on Chief Jason Newby to the podium so we can swear at a few new officers, swear them in. Thank you.
Yes, we've got four new officers we're going to swear in tonight. So I've had some people ask me, if we're full staff, why do you keep, how do you keep hiring people and bringing them in? So I just want to remind everybody, if we, if we were to hire an officer today, it's a six-month waiting period for them to attend the academy. And then it's another six months of training. So if we were to hire somebody today, it would be a year from now before we would have them in front of you. And also, we've had, we've had a couple of resignations and retirements. So even though we're full staff, there's always going to be those that come in that, you know, spots that we have to fill. So I want to introduce Officer Zachary Lancaster. Officer Cameron D. Armond. Officer Melinda Dennison. And Officer William Bryce McGlaughlin. Officers, if you would, raise your right hand, prepare to take the oath.
I state my name, citizen of the Commonwealth of Kentucky and the United States of America, and solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform to the best of your ability the duties of police officer of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, and that will support, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Commonwealth of Kentucky, so that we God.
If there's any friends or family members that want to pen the officers, you can come up and do that now.
Congratulations, thanks for your service.
Welcome, congratulations.
Many much, gentlemen. Congratulations.
Awesome.
Thanks for your service.
Okay. Congratulations.
Mayor, Council, we have one promotion, so I'd like to introduce Sergeant Jack Leake. Sergeant Leake, go ahead and raise your right hand, take your oath.
I state my name, citizen of the Commonwealth of Kentucky and the United States of America, and solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform to the best of your ability the duties of police sergeant of the city of Hopkinsville, and will support, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Commonwealth of Kentucky, so that we God.
Congratulations.
What am I?
Jesus.
Congratulations, thanks for your service.
Congratulations, too.
All right, thank you all for being here tonight for this swearing of the new officers and Jack's promotion. Thank you on that, thank you Chief Newby. On that, I would like to move to item six. And item six, we will have public comments. If anyone would like to take the mic and have us voice it to council, please come to the mic now. State your name and address. You have three minutes.
Thank you, my name is Thomas Wright. I'm not a local, but we do want to move to the area. I represent Michigan Total Healing Center and Kentucky Total Health Center. We're a marijuana company that have been operating five, going on six years in Michigan. Our ultimate goal is to move down here, you know, and work with the jurisdiction municipality that wants us here. You know, we want to be good neighbors, you know, for everyone in the local municipality. And this is basically a first introduction to start a line of communication with you guys to see if this is something you guys want to do. You know, I've worked with several municipalities in Michigan and other states, drafting ordinances for locals, everything from no dispensaries in the town to, we got 25 in one in Michigan. So obviously, that's too many. But that's what I'm here for, to kind of help out. You know, I'm going to pass out some business cards to you guys. And we just want to start a communication with you guys. You know, our ultimate goal would be to open an extraction lab where we're making gummies, baked carts, and things like that in one of your industrial areas. And possibly a store somewhere on that, I think it's 41 corridor, going down there to 24, is that right?
Yes.
Um, you know, and obviously, you guys know better where you feel comfortable zoning this stuff. Um, you know, I'm just here to help, you know. If you guys don't want marijuana companies in your town, I get it. We're not everybody's cup of tea. But I want to help you guys get that ordinance in place before company, other companies that aren't going to be so forthcoming like myself get into your area. Because as you guys know, it's easier to put the ordinance in before anyone comes, but it's hard to remove someone, you know. Other than that, um, if you guys have any questions right now, I'd be happy to. But, uh, you know, I'd like to maybe come back in a month and be on the actual agenda and start an actual conversation. You know, I can get you guys local ordinances from several different municipalities up in Michigan. So you guys need to get a little direction with it. We're working with Bradley Clark. Uh, he's an attorney out of Louisville who's also, um, working with the state on getting the last of the rules pumped out right now. So, uh, you know, we're doing everything I can, we can to see that you guys see some local tax revenue from this. Um, as of right now, that's not wrote in, but we are fighting for it. So.
All right, well, be glad to hear from you and just give us a call up here at City Hall, and we'd be glad to talk to you.
Definitely, pass some cards out to you.
Please do. All right, does anyone else like to take the floor? Thank you, Ms. Motley.
Good evening, Guinda Motley, 223 Creekview Drive, Hopkinsville. And on behalf of the Watkins family and the Bell Hooks Legacy Group, I just wanted to publicly thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. And thank you, City of Hopkinsville, for coming together and just making us have a wonderful, wonderful day in Hopkinsville last Friday. And we're just so appreciative. And I was able to share with Mayor Knight that we have received many, many texts and calls and emails from people across the country who heard about what happened right here in Hopkinsville. And they wanted to express their congratulations and that they are so proud of us in leaving such a wonderful legacy. And so we sincerely thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else would like to come to the podium and public comments? All righty, seeing none, we'll move into item seven, Mayor's comments. I'd like to say thank you. We, me and Troy went to Frankfurt this last week. We met with the state representatives and senators, had some good conversation. Hopefully, we get some of the things we asked for. We're still going to keep going for the city of Hopkinsville to keep asking. And Friday was a great day for Hopkinsville. I was hoping the sun would come out, but good Lord had other opinions for that. But we still had a great day at the museum for the legacy of Bell Hooks. We unveiled the street sign. Thanks, Dave, and all y'all's hard work. I know y'all was planning on sunshine, but we didn't get it. But, uh, thank y'all very much for your hard work. And thank you to the community and to the council for being there and supporting this for us, thank you. Um, also, I'd like to say thank you to Reverend Joe Level and Ardell Owens for the invite to Mount Olive Baptist Church that we done on March 3rd, on Sunday. We had a good turnout there, had a lot of conversation. Thank you to them. And I would like, now, we'll go into, say thank you and say we're very proud of the school board and the robotics winning state. They won the state competitions. Ms. Penny over there at Gateway Academy and Coach Ben Smith, they've done a wonderful job with these young men and women that they coach. And they really done a good, good deed and showed, and shined out for Hopkinsville. It made us look really good. School board done a great job there. And I'd like for everyone not to forget the Alhambra. We got Cam and Neely coming up, Cinderella on March 14th through the 17th at the Alhambra. We'd like everyone to show up for that. And we also have some other school programs coming up at the Alhambra. Please come and support our Alhambra and our theater because they really do ship make us shine in Hopkinsville. On that, and I would like, also like to say, congratulations to Dustin Lopez. He was named Hopkinsville High School Head Football Coach. Go Tigers! We could say that for a couple more years, and I'm proud to say that. Bleed a little orange there on that. Keel, you was there too. You know, I will say thank you to Hopkinsville High School for keeping me involved and updated with that and with Chris Menzel. And I'd like, great shout out. I believe Mr. Lopez is going to do us a great job coaching the head coach on that. Now, moving into item eight, I will go to reports from officers and committees and guest speakers. And now I'm going to call on Ms. Peg Hayes to come up and speak to us about the Hopkinsville Real Estate Development Proposal.
Hi, good evening, Peg Hayes, 2815 Witty Lane, Hopkinsville, Kentucky. And acting as the Chair of the Local Development Corporation this evening, and the mayor asked us to come in and talk about the Hopkinsville Real Estate Development Proposal. And many of you know that last fall, Planners Bank added up over $10,000 to hire Jeff Siegler to come into the community. And he was here about two and a half days, three days. And he interviewed over 75 people. Some of you all interviewed county people, city people, business owners, business renters, former business people, past business people, people from all walks of life in the community to get an assessment of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, who we are, and the downtown situation, and to talk about redevelopment from a perspective that would be doable. And I believe that you all have in, in your packet, you have a little proposal that he put together. And we can talk about some of the, he had seven points that he wanted to use as a revitalize or die, is, is what he says. And I believe we all know these things are all true. And we sometimes need to get somebody else to help us think about them a little differently. But the big thing, and I believe Hopkinsville has lots of hope, but hope is, is not an action plan. Hope is an emotion. And Jeff wants us to put an action plan together. And you have a proposal from him where he could do that. And basically, what he would do is he would identify some market opportunities for Hopkinsville. One thing, if, if you were any of the groups that really impressed me about Jeff was he, he was able to condense things and get them in a doable fashion. And one of the first things he said is, some of the easiest things you all could do would be clean your city up. I mean, come on, let's pick some trash up. Let's light it up a little bit, some things that would be very easy and very doable to make it be a little more attractive. I know that we talk about the transient population, and that was really not what his focus was, just to, to make sure we addressed that, that that was the other gentleman, Randy Groves, that the city was, took that lead on that. So these two individuals and their work would dovetail each other. So I would ask that you take a look at the Real Estate Development Proposal. It's very important to identify these areas and see if we can't come up with a way to get this initiated while there's still some momentum going and get this happening so we can get some outside investment. There's some grant opportunities within it and move on what Jeff Siegler came and did and gave us to the community. And all my life, you know, we all think Hopkinsville doesn't really have an identity. And I kind of agree with that. We have some vague forms of identity. But one thing that always seems to poke its head up, and it's very unfortunate to me, is that we don't believe in ourselves like we should. And if nothing else, Jeff again pointed out that we should believe in ourselves because we have a great community. I mean, look at these police officers that just came on board and the promotion and where we live and what a great world we have. And that he, he kind of left us with, you know what, guys? We can all do better than this. Alls we have to do is step up and do better. And so I, I hope that that's what we'll do, take his recommendation and get the funding and get his proposal activated.
Thank you, Mayor. Any question for you, Chase? Thank you, Ms. Peg. Thank you so much. All righty, on, uh, under that reports, I'm going to bring up, it's not on your paper right here, is 8B. Would Phillip Peterson please come to the podium so we can talk? A couple council members asked me to have Jerry be here tonight. But Jerry is doing what he said he would do last week, go to Oak Grove. And that's where he's at, okay? But we have a few, and Phillip's going to try to answer some of our questions. So if you have any questions, please fire away. And Phillip, don't have an answer, he'll get us an answer. So, yes, sir.
So Phillip, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
You know, now that we've had time to digest what we heard last week.
Right.
Or last time we were here. You know, I definitely think, based on what you all told us, that we've got some shortcomings in the system that we're using. Now, we talked about funding and, and we still haven't figured out, from what I understand, how we're going to fund that if we end up doing it. But here's the thing I'm, I'm struggling with.
Okay.
So I live in the county. I live in the city. Now, my tax dollars are going to the county, and that's going to be paying for this system, okay? Now, I live in the city, and if we partner and go 50/50, I live in the city. So my tax dollars are going to this 50% in the city. My tax dollars as a resident of the county are going to the county's 50%. It looks like we're being double taxed if we lived in the city as far as it goes toward this partnership on this radio system upgrade. And I'm trying to understand, and I know what's a need, I know what's important. But at the same time, it would seem like to me that maybe that needs to come from just the county and everybody get their share instead of the city, people who live in the city getting their county share and the city share. Does that make sense?
It does. And, and I kind of see your point. But, and we talked about it the last time we were here, is that also works vice versa for the people that work in the city but live in the county. They pay the city taxes, but they live out in the county. So it, it is both ways there. And I can't really stand up here and make that argument for you. But what I can do is, is, I understand the way you're looking at it. But if you look at it from that way, then anytime that, that there's a state or federal grant and they're going to put money into the city and they want the city to match it, are you not going to take that grant money because it's double taxation? You know, I feel like this is me talking personally, that, that, that our job as representatives is public safety and infrastructure. The county couldn't take this on on their own. So if we don't get some help, all the citizens of Christian County are going to suffer from it. Uh, because there's, the revenue's just not there. So when we all came together, that was part of our job is to figure out, number one, what system we want to implement. And the second one is, how are we going to fund it? And, and so, you know, that's why we're, we're, we're asking what we're asking. And like the mayor said, the judge is in Oak Grove tonight of, of doing the same thing to bring everybody that's, that's on the radio system putting in some. You know, because of, and like I said, I don't want to sound like I'm arguing, but I'm trying to put some information out.
I get it.
You know, all the, anybody that's got a radio in the city is on that, this system. So I would, I would see your argument if it was just county units on it, just the county people benefiting from it. But because it is everybody in the city on this system, we're not, we're not bound to provide it, but we're providing a service for the city without any charge. So I know, that's kind of my thing. If that's not making sense, I'll try to explain a little further.
How many radios is, I think the city's got roughly six, 700?
Randy's got that, I don't have it, no.
Okay, all right.
But we did break down, we did look at some numbers to kind of see how many, you know, actual radios are out there. We've looked at some radio traffic. We're able to look at each tower, see how much traffic's coming and going over that. So we've done some research to try to, to try to figure out where the most usage is, how much, and who's got it. I don't have those numbers because Randy had to go with Jerry down there. But, but we can definitely get those numbers. So do I have an answer for your question? No. But if.
You've done very well, thank you.
You know, if, if, if you want the county, you know, everybody in the county and the city to, to have the best radio system out there, then we're, the county can't do it by itself. So that's why we're here. If, if we can't, if we could, we would. And then, you know, it would be the county system. But this is just one of the ways that we've found out. One of the mechanisms is how we make this work.
Right.
If we can't come to an agreement on it, then it probably won't get done, just to be honest, because we can't, we can't do it on our own.
Well, Phillip, get with Randy and Jerry. And if you email me the numbers of radios, that way I can share it with council so they'll know how many radios that we're using in city and out of city. I think we're roughly around six, 700 radios in the city itself.
I would say it's probably, probably right. And, and.
If you'd give me that number so I could supply it to council.
And you, you also see that most of your traffic generated is through the city.
Yes.
Uh, most of the, the transmissions that's generated is, is done through the city. It's kind of hard to manipulate those numbers, but, um, because you're just going by towers. But we know, uh, kind of the two towers that the city would be on, so we look at it like that, but it's not an exact size. But the radios, we can definitely get numbers on radios.
Any more questions from Squaw Peterson?
And I am available 24/7 if anybody wants to call me personally or however, call me anytime, talk, I'd be glad to talk to you.
Thank you, Phillip.
Thank y'all.
All righty. I'll move on to item nine, approval of minutes.
So be it.
Second.
Motion and second. All righty. All those saying, singing about saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Then we move on to item 10, ordinances. Uh, ordinances, 06-2024, pile lane zoning, second reading. Ms. Brittany?
Mending the zoning maps of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky. Zone properties on pile lane. Whereas Community and Development Services initiated a zoning map amendment by Resolution 202309 to assign the original zoning designation of R3 1 and 2 Family Residential District properties located on pile lane. And whereas Community and Development Services made favorable recommendation after January 29th, 2024 meeting for City Council to approve original zoning application, R24-1-2. And whereas City Council concurs, said recommendation is an agreement with the Hopkinsville Christian County Comprehensive County Comprehensive Plan, and significant physical, social, and economic changes have occurred warranting the zoning of the properties. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, pursuant to KRS 100.211 Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances and Community and Development Services Resolution 202309, and recommendation dated January 29th, 2024, the following properties, as further described on Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein, are hereby zoned R3 1 and 2 family residential district. 1198 pile lane, 1216 pile lane, 1224 pile lane, 1228 pile lane, 1234 pile lane, 1242 pile lane. Section 2, if any section subsections in its clause or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
All right.
So moved.
Got a motion by Amy. Steve, so I can turn up his hair nade here. All right, motion by Ms. Amy and Councilman Keel. Any discussion? I call on the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamburger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
And that does pass on second reading.
All righty, we move into ordinance 7-2024, closing portions of Ellen Street, second reading.
An ordinance closing a portion of Ellen Street in the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, whereas Community and Development Services made a rule recommendation after January 29th, 2024 meeting for city council to approve street closing application, SC24-1-1, pursuant to KRS 100.324 and 82.405 as requested by Derek Quarles. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, Hopkinsville City Council hereby makes finding effect pursuant to KRS 82.4052A that Carl E. Thomas Eastman Brothers LLC and St. John Baptist Church are the only property owners abutting the portion of the street to be closed. And Hopkinsville City Council further makes findings effect pursuant to KRS 82.4052B and C that Carl E. Thomas Eastman Brothers LLC and St. John's Baptist Church were given written notice of the proposed closing and further acting by and through its duly authorized agents have given written notarized consent to the street closing, copies of which are attached here to and incorporated in by reference as Exhibit A. Section 2, that a portion of the 30-foot wide street starting approximately 144 feet from the intersection of Ellen Street and Falls Lane and extending 92 feet to the adjoining property to the south, consisting of approximately 2,754 square feet, more particularly described as attached here to and incorporated herein by reference as Exhibit B, is hereby closed as a public way subject to the following restrictions and/or conditions. One, utility compliance. The applicant shall comply with all requirements of the various public and private utilities, including 100% financial responsibility for relocating any utility lines, equipment, including storm drains as requested. Two, easements. Proper easements are to be provided to utility companies who have lines and services that are found within the street. In addition, the city shall reserve all necessary easements within the street right away prior to closure. Exiting utilities shall be identified and appropriately marked prior to closure. Three, department head comments. The applicant will address all comments submitted by department heads and incorporated into Community and Development Services staff report. For street closure procedures, the applicant must follow the required procedures to properly close the street. Five, consolidation of the property with the adjoining property is required. Conveyance of the street, closed portion, independent consolidation with the applicant's adjacent property is prohibited. Six, any changes or modifications of conditions by the applicant under which the street closure is granted will void the recommendation. Section 3, if any section subsections in its clause or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 4, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
I need a motion.
Second.
Just Meeks and Mr. Martin. All righty, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I call the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamburger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
And passes on second reading.
All righty. Ordinance 08-2024, renaming Quarry Street as Pastor CE Timberlake Way, first reading.
An ordinance renaming Quarry Street as Pastor CE Timberlake Way, whereas First Street Baptist Church requested to rename Quarry Street as Pastor CE Timberlake Way, and whereas there are no address changes and all of the budding properties are owned by First Street Baptist Church. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, that from the intersection of East First Street to Wood Street, as further described on Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein by reference, is hereby renamed Pastor CE Timberlake Way. Section 2, if any section subsections in its clause or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
So be it. Francis and Travis Martin. All righty, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I call the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamburger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
And that passes on first reading.
All righty. Ordinance 09-2024, FYI 2324 Operational Budget Amendment, first reading.
Amending the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Summary, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, a summary, section 1 of ordinance 42, 2023, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023 and ending June 30, 2024, is amended as follows. Revenues, general fund, $47,640,124. Municipal road aid fund, $683,722. Prior year, $2,292,052. Total revenues, $50,615,889. Expenses, general fund, $49,932,176. Municipal road aid fund, $683,722. Total expenses, $50,615,898. Surplus, zero. Section 2, the full text of this ordinance is on file in the office of the undersigned city clerk of the city of Hopkinsville at 7:15 South Virginia Street, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, where it is available for public inspection between the hours of 8 o'clock AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday.
All right.
So moved.
Amy. What's that?
Steve.
Steve, yeah. All right, we have Ms. Craig and Steve, motion second, and any discussion? Seeing none, I call the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamburger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
And passes on first reading.
All righty, ordinance 10-2024, Code of Ordinances Supplement, first reading.
Enacting and adopting a supplement to the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky Code of Ordinances, whereas American Legal Publishing Corporation of Cincinnati, Ohio has completed the 2024 S-16 supplement to the Code of Ordinances of the city of Hopkinsville, which supplement contains ordinances of a general nature enacted since the prior supplement of the Code of Ordinances of this municipality. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, that the 2024 S-16 supplement to the Code of Ordinances of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, which includes ordinances adopted through December 31st, 2023, a copy of which is on file in the city clerk's office, is hereby adopted in full and incorporated into the Code of Ordinances by reference, the same as if set out in its entirety. Section 2, if any section subsections in its clause or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
I'll move.
Steve and Terry, thank y'all very much. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the clerk to call the roll again.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamburger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
And passes on first reading.
All right. Item 12, municipal order. Municipal order 04-2024, presiding officer.
Pursuant to chapter 31.22 of the Code of Ordinances, Hopkinsville City Council hereby appoints Councilmember Travis Martin as presiding officer in the mayor's absence. This term shall expire December 31st, 2024.
So moved.
Got Amy and I got Steve. All right. Any discussion before we move on that?
Probably should. Loaded question there.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, that's moving along. Thank you, Councilman Martin.
Yes, sir.
Municipal order 05-2024, Employee Policy and Procedure Handbook. And Kenny, no, you're not reading all that.
Effective April 1st, 2024, Hopkinsville City Council hereby amends the Employee Policies and Procedures Handbook as attached.
So moved.
Amy. Tom, thank you very much. Any discussion on the handbook? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All righty. On item C, municipal order 06-2024, FYI 2324, Stormwater Utility Budget.
Pursuant to section 54.021 of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances, Hopkinsville City Council hereby approves the attached 2023-2024 budget for the Hopkinsville Surface and Stormwater Utility.
All righty, I need a motion.
Motion.
I got Travis.
Second.
Steve. Keel. All those, any discussion on the budget for stormwater? Seeing none, I will, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, moving right along. Item 12, other, any other comments or things y'all would like to speak about tonight? Anything good?
One thing I would like to do, Mayor, on the stormwater utility, at some point, I'd like for them to come in and brief us. We haven't heard from them in quite some time.
Not a problem. I will get Mr. Nichols.
Mayor, not.
I was thinking, hey, you got them on business.
After you brought that up, committee of the whole, I got with Steve Born, what we've